Good morning. Welcome to the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for January 4th, 2016. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance if everyone will please stand.
(inaudible)
Dear Lord, we just thank you for this day and all that you blessed us with. Dear Lord, we thank you for the county that we live in. Thank you for the people that live in this county that we serve. Lord, please protect those that defend our country, protect those and keep those safe. Go with that. Lord, guide and direct us this year to make the best decisions.
We'll move to the public comment session. There are many individuals who have signed up to speak. I think it'll probably be, most will be on the same topic. If I could ask everyone to please limit their comments to three minutes and we'll move on from there. In no particular order, I was handed these cards. First person is Vicki Rogers.
Good morning.
Good morning. I've given you some paperwork to look at that I pulled off some internet information. I'm Vicki Rogers and I live at 1210 Francis Farm Road and I'm here to speak on behalf of over 291 people who assigned the petition speaking against a proposed firing range and associated retail store to be built on Palmer Road and Francis Farm Road. We're asking the Haywood County Commissioners to exert their statutory power to deny a building permit for this proposed structure. The land parcel, and you have a picture of that, is PIN number, and I'm not going to repeat that, D-number. Owner is Betty Felment Lewis of Greensboro, North Carolina. She purchased this land in 2015 after a settlement of taxpayer dollars for her land that surrounded the old landfill off of Francis Farm Road. Now that land's groundwater was determined to be contaminated by an over 30-year-old landfill. Our concern is that the firing range has the potential to further pollute this area. Its operation has the possibility to create poisoning on the land and water sources from lead and its residue, to create unacceptable noise pollution in a non-industrial area, and can cause a negative environmental impact on the people and the animals within its vicinity. Increased traffic to this business will be detrimental to a residential area composed of single-family homes. Families and community residents increase the risk of exposure to numerous weapons, both fired in a building and being transported to and from the range. Now I refer you to the University of Vermont Legislative Research Service article, "The Effects of Firing Ranges in Vermont: How Lead and Noise Impact Communities." There is a reference to North Carolina in that article. It references accidental shootings, high levels of noise that can lead to hearing loss, ringing in the ear, stress, anxiety, high blood pressure, gastrointestinal problems, and chronic fatigue. Wildlife can be negatively affected with adverse physiological and behavioral changes, also high levels of stress, suppressed immune systems, and disruptive mating patterns and habitats for raising their young. And then finally, I would say that the North Carolina Justice Center in Edneyville, near the Blue Ridge Community College, was, has finally built an indoor firing range for law enforcement personnel. There was a lot of opposition because they proposed an outdoor range, but that was overcome with a $2 million General Assembly allocation in 2009 for this structure. The potential for the Francis Farm firing range proposal is to financially fail, and its failure would leave an empty building on what was valuable economically sustainable farmland. So in summary, our community has given you a petition with signatures of 291 people that indicate we do not want a firing range retail store built here. Its potential to contaminate land, disrupt people and animals' lives in the vicinity, potentially create hazards of traffic and firearms in this small community is unacceptable to us. So we ask that the Commissioners deny any submitted building permit or permit to be submitted regarding a building with the purpose of a firing range and retail sales of firearms on Francis Farm Road, Waynesville. Thank you.
And again, I ask that folks limit their comments to three minutes, please, because we have several people who want to speak and out of fairness to everyone, if we all obey the same rules. Mark Palmer, please.
Mr. Chairman and all County Commissioners, we appreciate you letting us come before you on this shooting range. I'm not much of a speaker now, I've got a few things written down here that I'd like to try to read them off. My name is Mark Palmer. I live on 255 Palmer Road. My property joins Betty Lewis', Betty Felment Lewis' property. My house is about 350 yards from where this shooting range will be built. I cannot feel safe to sit on my porch. I will be in danger of working in my fields and it will be a danger for livestock. The property on Ratcliffe Cove Road, Francis Farm Road, and Palmer Road has been farmland for 150 to 200 years, and I hope Betty takes this into consideration, and her family was one of the first ones to farm on Francis Farm Road. This shooting range may be safe on the inside, but it'll be dangerous on the outside. The people that comes to shoot will not all be law officers and honest people. Some of them make, could be terrorists, and the people who is on the outside will be the danger ones. I hope Betty Lewis will take this into consideration and not let her son Jumeirah build this shooting range on her property. There is 10 to 12 houses that is in danger of having their property shot at. I have property on 94 Palmer Road also. It is a hay pasture and woodland. My daughter owns the old home place where I was born. This will lower the value of our property, and I hope that the Commissioners will help some way to help us out. And I don't think it is a farming community in Haywood County that needs to have a shooting range in it, especially where there's partly populated and farming. And I hope you all will take this into consideration and try to help us if you can, and I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Lisa Nelson.
My name is Lisa Nelson. I live at 35 Treble Clef Lane in the Crimes Comf community, but I am heir to the property on 92 Touchstone Drive just off of Palmer Road. My Uncle Mark Palmer just spoke to you. He is the first of five generations left by my grandfather, James Elmer Palmer, who farmed that land in the early 1900s. As one of the grandchildren of Elmer Palmer, I'm one of the generations that's been able to enjoy coming into the farming community and the setting that which it provided, which was open land for children to grow and play. There are generations in our family that will no longer know that if this gun range goes through. We feel that it is going to have adverse effects on the community. It will devalue the property as it is today, whether it's still rebring farming land and some of the major parcels that are there, or to the homes and the new homeowners that have built. While we know the indoor gun range would provide a concise place for shooting to take place, the ordinances of noise here in Haywood County would still allow for outdoor shooting up until 10 o'clock at night. Some gun enthusiasts will be too excited for the guns they have purchased to wait to get indoors and may want to show them out in the parking lot, which could include shooting. The adverse effects of the stress levels of the people that live in that community will be affected immensely. We would like for you to take into consideration not to allow this to happen in the Ratcliffe Cove community off Palmer Road. I have law enforcement in my family, and I know that a shooting range is important to them to be able to continue to hone their skills for what they do to protect us. This is just the wrong piece of property for this to happen on, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Danny Higgins. Morning.
I have objection to the proposed gun range on Palmer Road. We as the community object to the proposal of the shooting range gun store reasons and concerns. Consider the residence of farmland community, just the idea of a shooting range bringing, being built at our midst is absurd. Consider all families who have lived on this property over 150 years, both Palmer and Liner. And the Liner family, my great-grandfather used to own this property over 150 years Consider about the residents from the proposed site, the Higgins family. From where this proposed gun range is located, my house is only 100 yards from this site, and I hope y'all will consider, take this into consideration. And there's a lot of unclear things that we don't, we don't know what's going to happen or what, what his proposal is. So I think, I hope you take all this into consideration and see if you can help us out.
Thank you. I'm having a little bit of trouble reading this next name. I think it's Ron Secula? I mispronounced that, I apologize.
Secula.
No, it's close, okay.
My name's Ron Secula. I live at number eight Sebert Road, and there's, there's a couple of things that I would like to cover in regards to the shooting range. Basically, one of the things that we need to be concerned about is the increased traffic on Ratcliffe Cove Road and also on Francis Farm Road. These roads are in poor condition at best at the present time, and the increased traffic, well, I believe, will obviously deteriorate further. The loss of property values is a great concern of the homeowners and the property owners in that area. Mr. Jim Francis, who is not here today, who is a neighbor of mine, spoke with a real estate agent, and the real estate agent inferred that the property values would drop 20 to 25 percent. Now, I just built my home two years ago and put a lot of money into it, and if I had to resell it, I certainly would take a beating if this was the case. So this is an important thing. Also, it's come to my attention that there's a possibility that Mr. Morrow will not only build the indoor firing range, but after that is complete, that he will include an outdoor firing range. And if that's the case, that is really, really bad. Also, he does military reenactments, and I understand he's going to be doing that on that property, which would be musket fire and cannon fire. We don't need the noise. I ask that the Commission deny any possible licenses to go ahead and build on that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Bohan.
Good morning. My name is Bruce Bohan. I live at 203 Bark Trail. My property looks down onto the proposed shooting range. My background's commercial building. I spent 30-plus years in Florida building. I love to build. I love progress. But this is not the place for this building. This is the middle of a beautiful residential farming community. And this lies in the problem that's deeper in Haywood County is we don't have proper zoning on what is commercial and what's residential. You're talking about taking a beautiful piece of land, beautiful foreign country, if you gentlemen ever been out there, and dumping a commercial building into it. It's just not fair to the people that live there. You're going to decrease our property value. You're going to hurt us. If my property value decreases, I'm going to have to say to the county guys, hey, you got to lower my taxes, lost revenue. And there is concern. There's 12 minor children that live in that neighborhood. They're going to have to pass that building every day. I'm not saying he shouldn't build the building. It's a great thing. It's just not the place. It's not fair to the people that live there, who have farmed this land for generations. It's not a fair thing. There's too many bad things that come with this building in this location. And I got to ask you guys to please, please do not allow this building to be built there. You're going to not only, you're talking about changing a community, the look of a community that goes back centuries. Not, not, just, you got to think about it. You're talking about dropping a commercial building into the middle of a beautiful farming that people have spent blood and sweat and tears to farm, and you're going to change the whole look of this community by someone who wants to build an indoor firing range. It's not the proper place. He can build it, it just doesn't fit there. Please, please do not let him build it there. Not even consider the fact, has any impact studies been done on the land? Has any impact studies been done on the roadways? Where's the traffic analysis? Palmer Road he wants to use as an entrance. That road is not a concrete road, it's not even a true asphalt road. It cannot handle the traffic, let alone Francis Farm Road or Ratcliffe Cove. Those roads can't handle it. So have any of these studies been done? Has anyone seen any of these studies? Have they been presented? Has there been an environmental study on the, on the land that he's seen fit to be built on? You know, he wanted to build the land, he wanted to build the project in Waynesville. He said, well, we're not, oh, too many rules in Waynesville. He quoted, he said, there's a lot of rules there. I'll go to the county, where the county's getting a reputation, and well, you can do whatever you want to out there. And I don't think, as people that live in the county, that's something you guys want on your plate. That's something you got to live with. We need rules and ordinance, so we need to say this is residential, this is commercial. We have to have guidelines for people to follow. It's important. So you got to please consider all this stuff, and please do not allow this building to be built here. You're going to hurt a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Josie Rathbone.
Hello, my name is Josie Rathbone. My husband and I bought the property off Touchstone Road off of Palmer Road at the end of August this past year. My concern is, I have a 15-month-old daughter. We have put our life savings into this property in hopes that she will one day inherit this. Also, if we have any future children, we want them to be able to grow up and play outside. We want them to feel safe. And what drawn us to this property was the fact that it is out in the country. It is a safe place, and all of my neighbors are wonderful. And so I just ask that you consider this before you pass, pass this to let Mr. Morrow go ahead and build the shooting range. Also, what I have concerns with is the fact that he is going to do an outdoor range. Is my daughter going to be safe outside? Is she even going to be safe inside our home? Also, if you will take a look at Mr. Morrow's Facebook page, you will also see that he does do civil war reenactments. So how long is it going to be before we're listening to cannonballs at 10 o'clock at night going off whenever our children are supposed to be tucked away safe in their beds? So please, take this into consideration before you try to pass this. We would greatly appreciate it as our family needs this. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Kirkman.
Hi, my name's Susan Kirkman. I live at 367 Palmer Road. I am in agreement with my neighbors here and their comments regarding the gun range. I moved into this community just over three years ago and would not have bought there if there had been a gun range at the end of the street. The only thing I can really add is to ask you to drive down Francis Farm and Palmer Road and, and picture a gun range in our neighborhood and ask yourself, does this make sense? I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Wade Francis.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Wade.
If the survey was taken, if y'all were to give a survey for this county, I would wonder what the worst two things that would come back would be, and I'm sure the first thing would be a landfill and then a firing range would be second. And, you know, Francis Farm Road, we just have a mile and a half road over there, and we're going to inherit both of those worst two things that could happen. So around this area, there's 16 homes that surrounds this property over there, and about 14 of them are retirees. Why should they have to go through this the rest of their life? They bought those homes good intentions of living there the rest of their life. We have one or two people that are, has cancer and, and has been in the Army and cannot stand noise. Well, they have, they're going to have to hear this, so I'd like for you to consider that. And then also, we're within 600 feet of a cemetery, and I think you can take that into consideration. And so, this is the best farming land in Haywood County, this piece of property is. And the money was, they said, was, you know, taken from what y'all bought that land for and, and then transferred this money over to them buying this property. Well, that was taxpayers' money, and I'm sure the biggest majority of the taxpayers do not want a firing range put on this property. And also, y'all look out to the farmers. We, there's not much farming land left in the county, and we'd certainly like to keep what we have. You saw the amount of names that's turned in there that do not want it. I, I collected 103 names of those, and six people turned me down out of the, collecting that 106 names myself. Yes, you're going to say that's not zoned over there, can't put it there. But 15 years ago, down in White Oak, they had an animal problem down there and was asked the Commissioners to help the people out down there to keep those people safe. And the ordinance was drawn up to help those people, and we, there and all over the county in this wild animal ordinance. So I would, I would like to see y'all draw all the ordinance up that would keep a firing range back in some wasteland somewhere. There's a lot of wasteland in Haywood County that you could get this put back and have it on wasteland where no one would bother anybody, and, and that's what I have to say this morning.
Thank you. Mary Lou Daley.
I'm Mary Lou Daley. I live at 633 Sebert Road. That property adjoins Mr. Palmer's property, and we also own a tract of land that adjoins the landfill. I agree with everything that everyone has spoken about this morning, but I particularly would like to emphasize the fact that I, as most of my neighbors do, agree that there is a need for an indoor shooting range. We need that for those that would like to better their skills and also for our police and law enforcement. But our community is not the area in which it should be. I thought about this in, very often, especially in the spring and the fall, we will be traveling on Francis Farm Road or on Sebert Road, and there will be a tractor in front of us or some farm equipment, and it's our neighbor. We know who they are. We slow down for them. We allow them to take their time to get the feed or hay or whatever it might be to their property along that road, and that's the way it has been for years and years. I doubt seriously that we would have that kind of consideration if we had this indoor shooting range with a retail store located. And lastly, I would like to ask you to please read the research. 30 years ago, when we were told that the landfill would be regulated both federally and state, we never anticipated what would happen, and I think you know what happened to our property that adjoins that landfill. I know that Mr. Morrow has said that he will meet all of the regulations, both federal and state, but if you would, please, read the research as I have done and find that that is not regulated the way it should be. And my question to you is, who is going to regulate that and who is going to pay for it? Please, please consider not allowing this to happen in our beautiful residential farming community. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Hyatt.
My name is Nancy Hyatt. I live at 1424 Francis Farm Road. I had not planned to speak, but I might be able to say a few things. We, my grandmother was a Ratcliffe. Our property was originally in the Ratcliffe family. She married a Medford, and I was a Medford. My daddy was a Medford. And then we inherited that property from them. In 1958, we built our house there, and it's been farmed, well, it was always farmed, but it's been farmed ever since. My husband farmed, my son Danny farms it now, along with his son Jacob. So their, our cattle runs out to the edge of Francis Farm right there. Our property is an airstrip. It runs from the Swifts above us, who are against this too, they couldn't be here, but it runs down to the Cemetery Road and straight down to, probably joins Jewel's property, or Betty's, whoever who it is. So Danny farms it now, and he has, usually has a good corn crop and has cattle, but where this shooting range is going to be built, it's right across Francis Farm Road, and where our property joins, it's one-tenth of a mile straight over there to our house. Now, we're, we're up a little bit, and maybe you can't see our house from there, but we can hear noise. Like of a night, if there's a roaring car comes down Palmer Road, stops at the stop sign, and goes up the road, round the curve, or over toward Ratcliffe Cove, we hear it after we turn the TV off and gone to bed. So I can't imagine what it would be to have all that traffic out there with that shooting range, which we certainly do not need in our community. The other day, my little grandson Jacob came in, he goes to college, and he said, "Nana, I want to sign that petition." I said, "Well, okay, Jacob, see, he's a hunter, and he's gone to Haywood Tech and took training in shooting and whatnot, but he's against that because we do not need it in our community." So I'm hoping that you will consider what a nice community we have and we don't So I'm hoping that you will consider what a nice community we have and we don't want to mar that with a shooting range. I thank you.
Thank you. And the last person that signed up is Joel Weaver.
Good morning. I'm Joel Weaver. I'm an attorney here in town. I'm strongly in favor of the indoor gun range. I have a concealed permit. My wife wants to get one. I have two children, age 13 and 10. I think there'd be a great benefit to professional instruction at a gun range for people who want to get a permit, also for children or anybody such as the Boy Scouts who really need something like this. And right now, we have to go to Brevard or South Asheville, which is very much a hassle. So I'm just in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that, as I said, concludes the folks that signed up. Is there anyone else who would care to speak?
Good morning. My name is Mary Guthrie and I'm a native of St. Petersburg, Florida, and I have lived in Shadow Woods for 25 years. I am on the Board of Directors of the HOA. They're the Homeowners Association and I have been asked to represent the homeowners, which there are 120 property owners. We are very concerned about the degradation of the farming community of which we feel like we are a part of. We are concerned about the traffic. We are concerned about the pollution, which will come from lead, its containment and its disposal. And of course, we are very concerned about the noise because as, if you don't know this, from where we are up on the mountain, there is an echo. So every time, and I look right into your property, I look right at it, every time there is a noise, we hear it. And we live in the mountains because we want to live there in peace and harmony. Something else, Mr. Francis mentioned this about the cemetery. I am a chaplain, a hospital chaplain, work with hospice. And I can't imagine people going to the cemetery to be with their loved ones or whatever they need to do there to grieve, having to be around an area where there may be people congregating to shoot guns off and make noise. I think that is an incredible violation of their sanctity to do that. And, you know, they wanted me to tell you that Shadow Woods, the people in Shadow Woods stand with you. We stand with you. We are your neighbors. And we know too, that whatever happens to you, happens to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who would care to talk?
I'm sorry. I don't know if Mr. Joel Weaver is still in the building. I would ask where he lives. He didn't mention where he lived. I bet he doesn't live on Francis Farm Road.
Didn't provide his address, but...
I just want to make that comment.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Is there any, anyone who would care to address any other matter before the board? Any action or lack of action that this commission would take, the first criteria would be that it be a lawful action. So Chip, I would ask you what lawful options exist.
Well, this matter is squarely in the hands of the Inspection Office, the Haywood County Inspection Office. And of course, they enforce the State Building Code. They would not issue a building permit for a use of property that was unlawful in Haywood County pursuant to a Haywood County ordinance. However, we all know, we have no zoning ordinance in Haywood County and I don't think they could refuse to issue a building permit on the assumption or fear that there might be excessive noise thereby violating the noise ordinance. But frankly, Mr. Chairman, the noise ordinance is the only ordinance that I know of in this county that potentially could be violated by this use of land. Commercial uses are certainly permitted anywhere in the county. We do not have zoning. If this hearing had to do with a zoning ordinance, there would be, the last time I remember there being standing room only in a county hearing was when we were talking about zoning ordinance. So we do not have zoning in this county and I frankly don't know of any current ordinance that this, that would be applicable to this situation. Now, that doesn't mean we can't look at other ordinances or amendments to ordinances, but that's the way I see the status of the county regulations and ordinances at this point in time.
Okay. Michael? Okay. Any comments or questions?
Well, there's a couple of things raised, Chip, that I just wanted to ask about that I was not sure about. And I knew that this was a potential issue, but not something that had come up. There was reference to, so you're not aware of any statutory authority that we have to do anything about?
Well, I think, I think we would have statutory authority perhaps. I'd have to, I'd have to do a little serious research and find out what that authority might be, but I'm just saying, as far as current ordinances, current ordinances are concerned, I don't know of anything that would apply.
Has the application been made or is it a proposed application? Do we know with the Building Inspection Department?
I do not know if he's, if plans have been formally submitted or if this is just proposed at this point.
I think he has, yeah.
Okay. I mean, can we get a copy of that?
Yes, if anything that has been formally submitted, yes.
And I guess as part of that use, as part of the application, do we know what type of gun range? I mean, is it completely indoors? And are there rules that they're required to go by to build an indoor firing range? I mean, I don't know anything about it, is why. I would just like to know a little bit more about what's going on.
We can research that. I don't think there are.
Well, OSHA has rules, I believe, with noise and with air quality inside. We've had the public comment. I asked repeatedly if anyone else had anything to say, so now we're discussing this as a board.
Well, if, you know, if I could just get some information on the process and where they are in the process and what the application... Go ahead.
I just wanted to comment. I did do a little bit of research on indoor shooting. I thought it's supposed to be an indoor shooting range. That's what I've heard. And of all the research I read, there was, the only noise problems was for the people inside the building. There wasn't, I didn't see any news reports. I'm not saying they're not there, but I didn't read of any online news reports where there was noise with, where the noise was a problem, other than for outdoor shooting ranges. And I think if this is indoor, it's contained.
Mr. Chairman, I remember, you and I had this conversation at some point in the past, someplace else in the state has faced this issue at some point in time over the last couple of years. We need to go in and find out exactly how that was dealt with in that particular county. I don't recall, but I remember it came up and you and I talked to...
I would ask that you, to Kirk's point earlier and to yours, that you research what legal or statutory authorities could...
Will do.
...play here. Now, for the folks that are here, there's been no application made to the county Commissioners. And as Chip pointed out, there is no zoning in this county. And perhaps that raises a larger issue. I don't know. This is the second time in a very brief period of time that there have been many people come before our commission asking, before this board, asking for, in essence, rules that would apply to land use regulations. And there are none in Haywood County and maybe that's an issue for discussion for another day. Maybe there should be regulations. There's a lot of people who have contacted me about that. You refer to impact studies, environmental studies, those kinds of things that are not required now for anything in Haywood County, other than, I think the only land use regulation we have is the Farmland Preservation Act, if I'm not mistaken. And that was enacted years ago to protect farms and farmers when people move beside a farm, they can complain about what goes, the farming activities, so they're protected from that. You know, you talked about distance to cemeteries, wild animals that Mr. Francis mentioned and occurred in White Oak years ago, and I think there was an ordinance enacted for that. So what you're talking about, what we're all talking about, is land use regulations. What can take place where? People commented, well, you know, I understand the need for a fire, an indoor range, but not here. Well, that's a perfect example of land use regulation, of finding an appropriate balance of where things can be in a county, what type of activity or construction and so forth can be where. And that boils down to the competing interests of property rights. And, you know, maybe there needs to be some regulation, maybe there needs to be a discussion about that. Now, we've had discussions in the past in Haywood County and they did not go well. People were quite upset, but again, that was almost 20 years ago. And the county has changed, I'm sure, some in the last 20 years. Maybe it's time for that discussion again. One thing that does concern me a little bit is, you know, when someone says, "I'll obey all the rules," once they get a firing range built and are using it, and if there is in fact more noise than was advertised, then you're into a technical expensive litigation to address noise ordinances then.
Yes, the noise ordinance is enforceable both by the county and by individual citizens. Individual citizens can bring a civil action, as can the county, and the district attorney can bring criminal action under our noise ordinance. I might say though, it's been very difficult to obtain convictions, that's been my experience. I'm not a prosecutor, but in the past, the rate of convictions under that ordinance has not been very, very strong and we do not have a decimeter, isn't it what it's called? We don't have the, we don't have the equipment in this county to measure decibels, noise decibels. So it strictly becomes a subjective matter of whether or not the noise level is unreasonable.
Most of it's been barking dogs, if I'm not mistaken, which is another issue. So what we'll do is, we'll bring this, we'll make this an agenda item. Chip, with two weeks, give you time to do your research and see what lawful options the county has. Whatever action we take must, of course, be lawful. I'm sure everyone here would agree with that. And I, right now, don't know what that authority would be, but we'll take it up again, or take it up in two weeks and discuss what legal options that we do have. So if you would make a note, Ira, to put that on the agenda for our next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Kirk, or...
I just want to make sure that everyone's clear that there is nothing before us that we are making a determination on whether to pass or not. There's been nothing presented to us and the process upon which we follow, there is nothing that would be presented to us. It's presented to the Building Inspections Department. If it passes their protocol, then they get the building inspection, I mean, they get the permit. So please bear in mind that anything that we are doing is actually a proactive effort and it's something that we have not done before because of the lack of zoning ordinances in our county. I just want to make that clear, that there's nothing that we can yea or nay on this particular subject.
At this point, no one has asked us for anything other than the building permit and I'm not even personally aware of whether that's been applied for or not, but we'll find that out. Okay. Okay, we'll move to constituent concerns. Michael?
Just hope everyone had a wonderful holiday and looking forward to the new year and so we're all ready to go.
Kevin?
No.
Okay. All right. Okay, we'll move to, I don't know, does everyone want to stay? If not, I'll take like a two-minute recess. If people want to leave and not stay through the rest of the meeting because the noise of exiting would be captured. So let's take about a two-minute recess and so anyone who cares to leave can do so at that time. Okay, we are back in session. We'll continue with administrative and agency reports, the annual audit report from Dixon Hughes Goodman LLC. Brian Broome is with us today from Dixon Hughes. Welcome, sir.
Good morning, Chairman Swager, fellow Commissioners. It's my pleasure to be here this morning to report to you that we have completed this year's audit and issued a clean opinion. Before I talk about the audit, just wanted to make a brief comment about your financial statements. The county issues what's called a comprehensive annual financial report and, or CAFRA for short, and this document goes beyond the minimum reporting requirements of GAAP in that it adds an introductory section and a statistical section, the purpose of which is to provide the reader of the financial statements more, both financial and other information about the county. And your finance director, Julie Davis, prepares this document every year and she does an excellent job and so much so that she, your county's CAFRA has received the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for well over, I think, 20 years now. I've lost track of it. But last year's CAFRA received the award and this year's CAFRA has been submitted and we believe that it continues to meet the requirements of that program. Now, as part of the audit, we issue you this summary report that tells you everything that you're required to know about the audit. As you're reading through this document, a couple of things I just wanted to point out to you, on the first page, is our contact information. So this is a lot of information to digest, so certainly if questions come up after today, you know how to get ahold of us for follow-up questions and I'll be more than happy to come back at a later time if need be. And then over on page six is a brief summary of our audit. And the first paragraph states that we have issued an unmodified opinion. I mentioned to you that we've issued a clean opinion, which is the common name. The unmodified opinion is really more of the technical name because it's called an unmodified opinion because it is the intention of every audit that the auditor will perform sufficient enough audit work and gather enough audit evidence to be able to issue an unmodified or unqualified audit opinion, as we've done. In the second paragraph, since the county is the recipient of federal and state funding in excess of $500,000, we have to perform additional procedures to test compliance with laws and regulations that would have a direct and material effect on the administration of those programs. Our results have been published in a fourth section of your CAFRA at the very back called the compliance section. In those results, we issued, we reported two findings this year in the area of Department of Social Services. One finding involved the Medicaid program and the second finding involved the North Carolina Health Choice. Those findings can be found in detail on page 173 and along with those findings, management has issued a corrective action plan. Now, the purpose of the corrective action plan is to help federal, state agencies review and try to dispose of those findings. So we offer no sufficiency or opinion on the sufficiency of management's corrective action. That is really up to the state to review the information and make a final determination. A couple, some financial information we've summarized for you. The table in the middle of the page, on page six, is a summary of the county's fund balance. Fund balance is a very important financial indicator and basically represents how much the county has to spend. The state also uses or monitors the health of all the governments in the state by monitoring each unit's fund balance. And they do so by calculating the amount of available fund balance as a percentage of the unit's expenditures. And the benchmark that they use is an A percent figure, which basically represents one month's operating expenditures. So we provided you that same calculation on this table and you see, you will see that the county ended the year with a little over 22 million in total fund balance, which is an increase of 4 million over last year. After backing off the restrictions and the amounts that are not available for you to spend, that leaves you with close to about 17... is an increase of $4 million over last year. After backing off the restrictions and the amounts that are not available for you to spend, that leaves you with close to about $17 million in available fund balance. So that available fund balance as a percentage of your expenditures is 24%, which is well in excess of the state's benchmark of 8%. And as a side note, the county, your county has adopted a policy of 11%. So again, well above that percentage. And then over on page six, since the largest source of revenue to the county is the county's property taxes, we provided you a little summary of the collections for the year. And again, that information is pulled directly from your CAFER, and you can find that information on page 115. So this year, the net levy was a little over $39 million, and taxes collected were about $38 million, giving the county a collection percentage of 97.54. And the little, the little graphic presentation below that is a five-year comparison, and you'll see that the county, along with all the other units in the state, shows a, an increase from last year to this year and the previous year. And basically, a lot of that increase is due to the state's change in the law, the tax and tag program that changed the way you measure the collection rate on motor vehicle taxes, but nonetheless, it is still a very strong percentage, the state. Although they haven't issued any written guidelines or benchmarks that they use, they like to see a collection percentage of at least 95% for units. So again, your county as well has done a good job in collecting its taxes for this past year.
A question, since we're on that topic. Current year taxes collected reflects less, less in 2015 than in 2014. What was the cutoff in 2015 that you stopped at?
Well, we use, our audits based on a 12-month fiscal year, but the way the change in the tax, the motor vehicle law that I mentioned earlier, the tax and tag together program, the way, when they made that change, actually, last year created an additional couple months of collections that units were allowed to collect. So last year, you actually have, I think, two more months than, or four more months, yeah, whatever that is.
So that would account for the disparity there?
Yeah. And that's, that's all I had prepared for my comments in closing. You know, I'd like to thank county employees, the county staff, both the finance staff and all the other departments that we visited and worked with during the year. They were all there, all county employees were very cooperative, very helpful, very prepared, and assisting our audit team during the course of the audit.
Any comments?
I just wanted to comment on the fund balances at 2015. I thought that was pretty good. I remember a few years ago, we were down to seven, and that 20, that shift from seven was around 2008 or '09, and it's grown to 24 during really hard economic times. So I want to commend our financial staff and everybody that, past managers and boards to be able to get that up to where it is, because it's, it's pretty amazing, really.
It did require competent stewardship of our finances in order to make that happen without a tax increase, I'm at it. And I know we're paying down debt. Last year, I believe, $9 million we paid down. So that speaks well of the stewardship as well. So you would describe this as a very clean audit then?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. All right. Kirk, you?
No, I just, is there, do we have an anticipated reason that the fund balance is 24%? I mean, do we have, do we have something we need to utilize that for, or?
Actually, the state average is closer to 27%. I think you did some research, and 29% for counties our size, so what, what this would say to me is we're getting close to where we should be, and then start to look at what were, what kind of projects are out there to try and mark true.
And this is slightly inflated by the fact that we collect a quarter cent sales tax for the community college, and we hold that until such time as they start another project before it's spent, so.
It's 1.6 million of it in, of our fund balance is community college.
How much you say?
Money, 1.6 million.
1.6 million. So, you know, that, and that could go out in pretty much in lump sum with this new training facility they've got. So it is slightly inflated, but it's still, even taking that into account, it'd be over 20%.
Yeah, 1.6 million, it would only be a couple percent, wouldn't it? 1.6 million, it would just be a couple percent.
It would be, it'd probably bring it down to close to 22.
Yeah.
So still very healthy.
This also helps a lot, and I think that Julie could answer this more, when you go to borrow money and, or if you go to refinance, which we've done a fair amount of in last years to get our interest rates lower and to get our payments lower, this helps a lot to have a fund balance like this.
And we still are maintaining, are we maintaining any school funds at this point?
No, there aren't any school funds sitting in fund balance, no.
I'd just like to make a comment to, you know, how the finance department, our county manager's office, and all the department heads, how, you know, they, how they work, you know, to work within the budgets, and like to comment on our board for the being very conservative and forward and taking care of Haywood County taxpayer money.
And one of the ways it builds up too is when you pay off debt and don't incur additional expenses, then the exact same revenue would result in an increased fund balance.
Yeah, I think to make your point, if you look at your budgetary comparison, you're required to adopt a balanced budget where, you know, revenues and expenditures equal. And when you look at the general funds activity for this year, they came in pretty much as budgeted. The key is in expenditure control, and that's where you did not expend as much as you had budgeted for, causing the additional $4 million.
Any other comments, questions? Well, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Very informative and important. Do we have any adjustment to the agenda today? Hearing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. We've had the opportunity to review the December 21st, 2015 regular meeting minutes. Are there any changes to those? If not, we'll move to Julie for a budget amendment.
Have one budget amendment for you today. This is for the Health and Human Services Agency, and it's for $15,599. This is for Rural Operating Assistance Program that we're budgeting an amount that we had not originally had budgeted, and we are going to be receiving that money, so in case we have reason to be able to spend it, we want to have it in there so we can.
Okay. Any questions to Julie? Okay, thank you, Julie. Any questions or observations on the consent agenda? If not, we entertain a motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. We don't have any old business today, we'll move to new business. We have two supplemental agreements for the Blue Ridge Heritage Trails signage project. We've dealt with this many times in the past, so. Welcome, Jill Jones.
I think this might be your second to the last.
Oh, really? Okay.
Thank you all very much, and Happy New Year. My name is Jill Jones, I'm the Director of Marketing and Communications for the Blue Ridge National Heritage Area, and just so you'll know, I have been with this project from the get-go. I feel your pain. We are very excited this year because almost all of the signs are in the ground. These two supplemental agreements have to do with two particular signs that we encountered concrete and terrain problems on digging holes, and so we need to get two different structural methods in installing one at Grandfather Mountain and another in front of the police station in Wilkesboro that has to do with the fresco sign. We have a couple more things. Out of 69 signs being installed in one month's time, we only have like three problems, and I think that's pretty remarkable. There's one in downtown Asheville that was installed in a pouring rain, and it shifted. So we got to fix it, and there's a typo in the Saluda sign. But other than that, everything is moving along fabulously, and our partners in signage program who stayed with us, and you all are among them, seem to be very, very happy. I personally was here when we installed the signs here in Haywood County. There are four. We have one at the I-40 Welcome Center, there's one right down here on Main Street about the quilt trails, one at the Shelton House, and one in the Bethel Community. So you all have a lot of representation in the signage program. What we're finding is that because this did take so long, we were able to add a kiosk in five North Carolina Welcome Centers that were not in the original program, bringing in our state partners. So at I-40, I-26 East West, I-77 North, and I-85 South, we have wonderful kiosks. So if you're traveling and have your family, go inside and take a look, they're interactive. And what this sign project has done, and I would just like to say it, I'm just very, very proud of this, it's created another heritage tourism product to bring people into western North Carolina with the goal of not only just understanding our heritage and culture, but of spending more money, staying longer, and hopefully helping the economy. I do want to thank the commission in Haywood County for being our fiscal agent. We have you in our new brochure and on our website, and I'm going to leave some brochures for you here. Each of the sites will have these brochures, as well as they're being given out at the Welcome Centers. And I think that's basically what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Jones? We've dealt with this, this matter many times, so.
And the last one that's going to come to you in about two weeks has to do with some marketing additions, so it's all positives.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? If not, we entertain a motion that the two supplemental agreements in the amount of $735 in one, and the second in $2,107.25 funded through Federal Highways Grant and Blue Ridge National Heritage Area, Inc., be approved.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. All right, the second item of new business is requesting approval of a memorandum of understanding between Haywood County EMS and Haywood County Law Enforcement Agencies for the participation in the NARCAN program as provided for them in the use of emergency situations. Jim Presley with us today. Jim?
Good morning, gentlemen. What you have in your packet is a memorandum of understanding where law enforcement agencies inside Haywood County will have access and training and the ability to administer NARCAN. Now, let me give you just a little bit of history on this. This has actually started as a sort of nationwide program. When it came to North Carolina, I think legally and statutorily, the responsibility for this program was shifted to the North Carolina Office of Emergency Medical Services. Dr. Tripp Winslow, who resides down in Wake County, is our state medical director, so the oversight for law enforcement administration of NARCAN in North Carolina fell to North Carolina Office of EMS, and of course, and they typically pushed it back to the counties, which is us, to be the oversight for this program. So let me provide just a little bit of history if you don't care, especially for those that this is the first time they've heard anything about the program. Questions that are commonly asked, what is NARCAN and how will it help people? Well, NARCAN is an opiate antagonist, means it counteracts opiates only, but we do have a considerable amount of those calls of that nature here in Haywood County. The intent and purpose of this medication is to reverse the effects, which are typically respiratory depression and/or cardiac and respiratory arrest from people who either intentionally or accidentally overdose on an opiate-based medication. It works very quickly, it's a safe drug to administer. We've been carrying it on ambulances here in Haywood County for probably, since the county went to paramedic level, which would be all the way back in 1992, and the rescue quad, of course, carried it before that. So it's not a new drug, it's been around a long time. We have, however, tweaked it a little bit as to how it can be administered. For years and years, we could only give it intravenously or intramuscularly. Now we have the ability to give it through an atomizer in one's nose, just like nasal spray, with the same effects that we would get from giving it in the form of a shot or giving it IV. So we've made the administration of this drug easier to access, and we've certainly made it easier to administer. You know, the other, the other question, what is, what is new about law enforcement administering it? Well, the truth of the matter here is, most of the calls where we get overdoses, law enforcement agencies inside this county, both county and municipal, are dispatched on those calls, and they typically, we stage, they arrive at the scene, make sure all the weapons and guns and whatever potential hazards are secured, and then we come in and provide patient care. So sometimes there's a little bit of a lag there, and sometimes they go on calls that turn out to be what they weren't dispatched as, and it would give them the ability to carry and administer this drug oftentimes in a more timely manner than emergency medical services could do it. Why the memorandum of understanding? Chip worked for weeks on this, and we went back and forth with it for probably another couple of weeks. The Haywood County Sheriff's Office would fall under, I guess, the county's umbrella of liability insurance, and we created a document where we state that, but that we also state that the municipalities, Canton, Clyde, Maggie, Canton, or whoever I missed, Waynesville, they would provide their own liability coverage for their employees or officers who carry this drug, is essentially what we've created. Everybody says, what are the negative effects of the drug? If NARCAN is administered to an unresponsive patient, the risks there are minimal, if any. You know, if you, if you overdosed on an opiate, the drug is going to work, and it's going to work well, and it's going to work predictably, but if they've overdosed on some non-opiate drug, then there's no harm to the patient administering NARCAN. We've, like I say, we've carried it for years, we've given it for years. I think we have created a memorandum of understanding. Chip, you could weigh in on this if you want to. I think we've fixed it where the liability to the county is going to fall under the county's liability insurance, most specifically back to EMS. We will be reviewing every call where this drug is administered, we will have peer review, we will bring up documents, it will be QA, QI, very, very judiciously as we come out of the chute with this thing, so we make sure where everybody is trained, everybody is equipped. Haywood Community College is providing the training for this, so no officer in this county will be allowed to carry the drug or administer it unless they've gone through the training program at the college. And I guess the last thing is what is EMS's stance on this? We are 100% in favor, being Haywood County EMS, myself, in law enforcement, working toward where this is a normal piece of equipment that they carry with them every day. You know, Megan Hauser at DHHS, Jing Paris, and some of the advocacy groups have really worked hard to push this through to get it to where we're at today. So I come here to tell you that EMS is in favor of this, and we think it's a wonderful thing, and we'd appreciate your blessing on it.
I see the sheriff is with us. You concur with this? Okay. I had, I had asked the question about liability, because, you know, we have the municipalities under the umbrella of the county, and I wanted to make sure that we had addressed sufficiently the liability issue to Haywood County, and it appears that that's been done.
And that was one of the main things that we focused on for the last, really since last spring, when legislation was introduced in the General Assembly, and I was really wanting to wait to see if that, until that passed, and it did pass, which clarified some of these responsibilities, and I think our MOU is totally consistent with the state law now.
Kirk, you have any observations?
Yeah, so Jim, assuming misdiagnosis by the, the officer or EMS personnel, you're saying that the negative impacts are minimal, if at all?
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
It's a tried drug, it's a proven drug, you know... You know, you can, you know, if water was available by prescription, they would tell you that side effects are nausea and vomiting. You know, that goes with every medicine that's ever been prescribed to anybody, and same with this drug. But the route that they're going to be giving it, either an auto-injector or nasally, is going to minimize that because it's administered slowly and it's a pre-calculated dose. You don't have to draw it up. You don't have to measure it. It comes to you ready to go, pre-measured.
So even if a person is misdiagnosed and has no opiate overdose, given them the medication, would not have an adverse effect?
Would probably have little to no negative impact.
Okay. Michael, clear?
What's the slang for opiate? What is that? I mean, what is?
Oh, there's all kind of, mostly what we see in opiates, and I'm sad to say this, and I think the sheriff will back me up, and I know the municipalities would. Basically, what we're talking about here is prescribed medications, Percocet, Darvocet, Hydrocodone, Oxycodone, Oxycontin. And I'm very sad to tell you that in the last six months, we have seen a resurgence of heroin in Haywood County because it's cheaper and it's easier to get. And the blessing in that is it's an opiate, so the same drug will work for it that works for all the prescription medications that are being accidentally overdosed or intentionally.
Well, heroin in Haywood County was only a matter of time. If you look at the state of New Hampshire, it is an epidemic there. And it's, the demographics of that state and our county are very similar.
And, you know, the availability of this is, in these situations, is time is of the essence. And, you know, what we're doing is providing a little bit more time or less time if somebody walks in and they're faced with it.
Yeah, and you know, what we've had, what we're trying to get in place, the North Carolina Office of EMS changed protocols to limber it up a little bit where providers were a little bit more able to administer this drug. So we've pushed this out to the fire departments as well, just because if we're really busy, the fire department and law enforcement stands a chance of being on the scene before we actually get an ambulance to the call. So all of those agencies are working under the auspices of North Carolina Office of EMS, and we're providing the local review of those calls and education as it needs to be.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, would entertain a motion that the memorandum of understanding between Haywood County EMS and Haywood County law enforcement agencies for the participation in the Narcan program be approved as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, next up, we have David Francis with a request for approval of an engineering agreement with McGill and Associates for corrective measures at the Francis Farm landfill. David?
Good morning. Happy New Year to all. Before you, we have an engineering proposal for the assessment of corrective measures for the Francis Farm landfill. The assessment of corrective measures is the document that we will submit to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality that will list out the remedies that we are proposing to help solve the groundwater issues that are out there. In an earlier presentation, I listed some of those proposals, that the remedies that we would use. Part of this agreement will list out those remedies and also the cost of those and to maintain those. So the assessment is required by our agreement with DEQ. We will be working in conjunction with McGill and Associates, and Banel Lammons is their hydrologist of record, that they will be proposing the remedies. And with the two engineering firms in conjunction, we will submit the ACM. Couple of things that have happened since we originally started talking about the ACM in 2014, the county manager got really busy and we acquired 44 acres of surrounding boundary property. We were lucky enough to get the dirt off of the 209 project, which will help us in the long run solve, you know, the issues out there and will become a focal point of the remedies. When we were first talking about this without adequate dirt, we also were talking about a geosynthetic cover, which was basically a large plastic bag going over the top of that. With the acquisition of the dirt, we can use the geosynthetic as a remedy, but the dirt will be our focal point in how the dirt will solve the attenuation of the groundwater flow as it flows out of the landfill and onto the neighboring properties. So a lot of things have happened, and we are proposing to do the ACM sometime in mid-2016 or the first, the third quarter of 2016. So a lot of things are still happening out there. A lot of work has went on. This past month, we abandoned a number of wells for the methane and drilled new wells onto the boundary properties that we had acquired that will bring us into compliance on the gas issue. But the assessment of corrective measures is just for groundwater. So hopefully, that, you know, this process, you know, will take some time. We know that the remedies that we, you know, will be selected there and a remedy that we will choose, we'll also have a public hearing on that matter as well. We anticipate sometime either at the end of 16 or the first part of 17. So it's going to be a year-long process to get this document ready to go. Any questions?
Basically, it's just an assessment of where we are in the process of correcting the issues at Francis Farm.
Yeah, and that assessment includes the remedies that, you know, we'll look at as to correct the groundwater migration problem off of that.
And that will be submitted to Deaner.
Yes.
And they approve it, and we know that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing.
Correct. That, yeah, we submit the remedies that we are interested in pursuing and then come back with a remedy that we are going to use. And as I said, you know, it's going to be, you know, the dirt that we stockpiled from the 209 project over onto the Shelton property.
And for clarification purposes, what we're doing now is things that they are going to require us to do, and we're not going to submit an assessment. And then there's to come back and say, oh, no, you don't need to be doing this and this. What we're doing now is already, they're looking at it, they've, they're in approval of it. They think we're doing what we're supposed to be doing.
Correct, yeah.
And we're just trying to get to the final document so they can sign off on it.
Right, and then we'll have, then we'll put that plan in place when that remedy is chosen, and we have the public hearing, then that, and they have a chance after we do the remedy and the public hearing to comment back to the county as well about anything or any concerns, issues that they have.
Yeah, and I think it's important to note that none of this is done in a vacuum. We are in constant communication with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, and so we don't do anything really that they aren't aware of and approve of.
Right.
And positive or approve of what we're doing to remedy the situation.
Right, because, you know, we started this back in 2009, and then, you know, we've steadily moved up, and, you know, we found out where the, you know, the plume of the contamination was heading. We've, you know, we've addressed those issues. We've addressed, you know, the gas migration now with the acquisition of the property. We just installed the wells last week, so we're going to be monitored. We'll have a new monitoring plan on that. The new monitoring plan and the water monitoring plan have already been approved by DEQ for the upgrades that we've done so far. And then the completion of the cap maintenance, that we just completed the cap maintenance about two or three weeks ago, and so...
Any other questions or comments? If not, then would entertain a motion that the engineering agreement for assessment of corrective measures for Francis Farm landfill between Haywood County and McGill and Associates be approved as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. All right, we'll continue on with David Francis to discuss the approval of an option to sell the former Haywood County hospital to the Historic Preservation Foundation of North Carolina with stipulations which he will prescribe. David?
Commissioners, back about this time last year, County Manager Ira Dove came to me and said he had a little project for me he wanted me to look at. And so, you know, you can see it's taken a full year to get that. But we've discussed numerous options throughout the course of the year, from giving it away to demolition the entire site, looking at grants to help us get through other environmental issues that the building has with asbestos. So we looked at a number of options. And with recent legislative changes that have happened, we think that we are in a good, good place to be right now. And I'd like to review those option, the option with you to sell the former hospital. Well, before you have right there is one of the original renderings from Lewis Asbury from Charlotte from 1927. Mr. Asbury was considered one of the state's first educated and born architects in the state of North Carolina. And the, his buildings, he has several historic buildings throughout the state of North Carolina, a lot in Charlotte, the Mecklenburg County Courthouse is one. So this building has a lot of historic significance throughout the state of North Carolina. It was the first publicly funded hospital in North Carolina. In 1925, the first bond went up and it was defeated. In July of 1926, the second bond was passed for $100,000. And then the hospital first opened its doors 90 years ago on December 31st, 1927. Okay, so the time is right to look at making the old hospital more productive. As I said, recently, new legislation have made credits more desirable, and these are historic tax credits that developers can use to help offset the construction cost and to bring the facility back up to use for affordable housing. Affordable housing for families, seniors, and veterans. We are in contact with the state Veterans Office about adding a component to the veterans to this facility. It'll be for elderly and families, and this veterans component will be an exciting addition as there's nothing west of Asheville, North Carolina that has a veterans component to it. So we hope that part of the equation will work out for us. At the present use, the school board administrator uses the front of the building, which was the 1927 portion of the hospital that I mentioned that Francis, or that Mr. Asbury did. The back of the building was, there was two sections. One was built in 1952 from an architect out of Asheville, and the later portion in 1958 was designed by Foy and Lee. The cost of upkeep of the building has become a significant expense for the county over the years. Dale Burris and his staff has regularly checks on the building and has done an outstanding job from the folks in the building industry have come through and have looked at this, have been thoroughly impressed about how Dale has maintained the building, as they've went into a lot of other historic buildings that the counties and cities have just abandoned totally. But it does come with a cost. Roof over the last two years was $205,000. To repair plaster from a water leak that was, that has happened, we anticipate the cost of around $30,000. Asbestos abatement still needs to be done to be able to replace some of the windows, a cost of $73,000. And the annual utilities to keep the building warm and keep the water flowing is around $75,000 annually. Because the building, as I said, was, you know, maintained for the school board in the front, and then the back of the building was vacated in 2012 when the Department of Social Services moved out to the Paragon Parkway. So the cost of maintenance of utilities from 2002 to 2015 was $505,000. Anticipated cost of maintenance and utilities for 2016 through 2018, roughly $329,000. So there is significant cost to maintaining the building, this not being used fully. Recent proposals, Haywood County was approached by the Landmark Group in 2014 regarding repurposing the old hospital, but without the tax credits at the time, was unable to do so. These tax credits have specific allocations that you can use, that the proposed site has to be within so many miles of hospital, of a pharmacy, of shopping and groceries. And at the present time, those delineation factors were glad to be here, and they've expanded them for 2016. Then we were approached by the North Carolina Preservation Foundation in the fall of 2015 with the proposed changes that were going to be taking place with the North Carolina housing finance. And we met with Mr. Alexander, County Manager Ira Dove, and Dale Burris, and I, we sat down. Mr. Alexander took a tour of the building, and soon after that, we, he put us in contact with Landmark Group. The Historic Preservation Foundation has a strong record of turning buildings into viable commodities, the Bellamy Mansion in Wilmington, the Edington Mill Village, the Highland Hospital in Gastonia, and the Lorre Mill in Gastonia. The Gastonia Hospital was similar to, it was an old hospital that was used and then became a historic affordable housing at the time, presently, excuse me. As part of the due diligence, the county met with three different developers. Two developers put forth proposals. Landmark Group had the most complete plan for the project. Mr. Burris and I met with the Landmark Group out there last month, and they brought their architects and their construction managers out to the project to survey the building. The rowhouse architects are the architects that completed the Grove Arcade over in Asheville and have several historic buildings and multipurpose affordable housing units to their credit. So the option to sell the former hospital. The option to sell the Historic Preservation Foundation of North Carolina. Okay, so the option is to sell to the Preservation Foundation. And North Carolina law allows the county to negotiate an offer to sell to a foundation or charitable trust that does and works in the preservation of buildings. So it would be an option to sell to the foundation, who then will in turn sell it to Landmark, which, okay, so there's going to be a double closing here, is what it's going to be. The option will have several conditions of the sale, which will, it'll maintain its historical integrity. There's a whole list of options there, but the building will remain an historical building as it is. It will not be demolished. It will not be torn down. It will not be, you know, resurrected as something else, but of affordable housing in this, next, okay. The Landmark Group has worked on many successful projects with North Carolina Preservation, and they're just finishing, they're finishing up a central elementary school in Alvermar, which they have hoped to have completed in July of this year. And there's a picture of it here. The cost of that project, $6.2 million. They also, as we talk about, talk about this, is 53 elderly units are proposed in this facility, which they are proposing roughly between 53 to 55 units for our facility as well. The Landmark Group, since Landmark's creation 30 years ago, the Landmark Group has completed or has underdeveloped more than $425 million worth of mixed-use projects to revive downtowns, restore aging neighborhoods, and create affordable housing in North Carolina, South Carolina, Maryland, Florida, Georgia, Tennessee, Texas, Wisconsin, and Virginia. Partnering with local governments, housing authorities, nonprofits, and private investors, Landmark Group usually serves as a general partner for its projects, assuming the financial responsibility both during and building of the operational phases. Landmark has expertise in design, construction, and property management. Landmark Group manages the properties that they rehab. They have over 3,500 units currently that they manage as well, too. Once this project would be completed, Landmark will be the managing partner of this facility. And here's a, shows, the graph shows their use of their portfolio, the locations in North and South Carolina, the different types of, from family and senior, and types of construction. There is also new construction for affordable housing that you can do as opposed to rehabbing the other historic buildings as well. Here's just a couple of examples that the Landmark has done. As I mentioned, the Edington, it was a renovation of a 19, started in 1988, of a 75-year-old high school into 35 affordable units. A 1930 historical school that they converted in 2008 to a 33-unit housing complex for working families. The Camerton, North Carolina, another school apartment that was built in 1920, and now is 40 affordable elderly housing units. And the Cleveland School was built and opened in 1927, rehabbed in 1997, was converted to 25 affordable units. And the Mebain Mill Lofts, it was the former Durham Hosery Mill, it's used as a textile, now holds 70 units for families. Waco, Texas, was originally built in 1912. In 2010, it was converted to 104 affordable housing units for family. And Ashbur Mill Lofts was constructed in 1917, and now has 70 lofts for families. So you see their portfolio is quite extensive. So what the Landmark is proposing for us, has proposed repurposed hospital into 50 to 55 units, one and two-bedroom units. Affordable housing for seniors, veterans, and persons with disabilities. Project will cost close to $7 million to complete. So option to sell, as I mentioned earlier, that the negotiated offer as part of North Carolina General Statute 105-277B, is that the county can enter into negotiations with a foundation whose sole purpose is for historic preservation. So their option will be with the North Carolina Preservation Foundation, who then will in turn, will then sell that to the Landmark Group, who will then... will then sell that to the Landmark Group, who will then pay the county. Does that make sense? Okay. So, the first tier of the tax credit applications are due by January 23rd. The second tier is May 13th. And notification of tax credit awards will be announced in August. So we're going to approve a, hopefully approve an option, and we'll, they'll submit for January 23rd. The second round is in May 13th. If our site is chosen, we'll go through the closing in January through March of 2017. The county will receive $200,000 at closing. The county would then pledge for second-tier deadline of $450,000 and no interest forgivable loan for 30 years to complete the project. And this is common. As I mentioned with the Gastonia Hospital down there, the county used $600,000 there to complete the project. The Albemarle project, which they're presently, that Landmark's presently working on, $450,000 was used by the city to complete the project. So the closing, so at that closing, we would then give $225,000 to the Landmark Group. And then another $225,000 at the nearing, 90 days nearing the completion of the project, which is anticipated in the second or third quarter of 2018. And as I said, the Landmark would stay as partner and general member throughout the 30-year term. So to complete this, so it sounds a little funny on the first tense that we're getting $200,000 at closing and then we turn around and then have another closing to give the gift or the loan for $225,000 then. That's just the way these deals are structured and the way that it makes it flow and work for them to get the appropriate tax credits and the buy-in and the partnerships from the county. And we'll also be looking to the town of Waynesville to partner on this deal as well, too.
Some of this amount could be in kind? Could be in kind?
Some of it can be in kind, yes.
So the town of Waynesville went beyond just the normal hookups and did sidewalks and that sort of thing? That could come off of that $225?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to advise there's about three minutes left on the tape.
Okay, then we'll take a very short recess before we resume discussion. Thank you. Okay, we are back in session and we'll continue. David, did that conclude your presentation?
Yeah, I just want to touch on just a couple of things, too. That time is of the essence with this, as I mentioned, the January 23rd deadline that the Landmark has to get the application in. One of the things that we've learned through this with the North Carolina Housing Finance is that we are in a little bit of a sweet spot as well, too, with the addition of the mileage extensions that they had this year for the grocery, the hospital, and things like that. And also that since the historic hospital sits in the town of Waynesville, that population of the town is used in the factoring of this. And so there's significant points with this because the town population is under $10,000, I mean, excuse me, under $10,000 in population. So all those factors have added up to that this is a very ripe deal for us. That as you remember, in 2011, you know, we got right up to the very, very edge of it. And then things changed. So, you know, right now, you know, we've waited, you know, another five years since that time to be able to move on this project. And just from talking to folks, I don't know if it's going to be in any better position that we'll have right now at this time, as perceived.
The last time this was tried, the rules were a mile and a half, I believe, from grocery stores, pharmacies, hospitals, and so forth, which, you know, in rural areas was really just an impossible standard to meet.
And it killed the deal.
It did kill it. We didn't have the tax credits. I went down and spoke to the director of the North Carolina Housing Authority with Patsy Dowling from Mountain Projects and lobbied to get that changed. It'll work in a place like Mecklenburg, which they refer to as the West. We had to educate them on geography as well. So this is a one-year thing, I think, and we need to take advantage of it if we can.
And I have with me today as well is Ted Alexander from the Preservation of North Carolina and John Siltner with Landmark Group, if you'd like to hear from them as well today.
Gentlemen, thanks for having me today. David, he stole all of my thunder. Thank you for such a wonderful presentation. I drove down here this morning and I was in my vehicle for a couple hours and I thought, what would I say? How can I tell you about myself, my company, what we've done for so many years? Ted Alexander with Preservation North Carolina has worked with Dwayne Anderson, Rex Todd, mentors, people I've looked up to and continue to look up to who are no longer with us. So driving down the road, I was thinking, how thankful am I? I have, I come from a construction background where I got to live in these communities, I got to work on these historical schools, these historical hospitals, mills. One of my first as a superintendent was Randallman High School. And then on and on and on. And I grew to love these projects because of what they mean to the communities, but also coming from a family, a tradesman, the people that come before us, being able to break down what they had done in the past and the amazing feats that they accomplished in getting these projects built. Because some of the projects I've worked on are just engineering feats of them getting built. So Landmark is a 40-year company, family-owned, operated and managed. We have almost 300 employees. I love the holiday seasons. We have this conference room that we can't use for a month because we take up donations from our site staff and also our corporate staff to purchase gift bags. And if, depending on how much we get, depends on how many properties in our portfolio that we can send gift bags to and have a little extra special Christmas. We take drawings at the end of there in December and pick which properties. The people that work and that have been with our company, we have employees that have been with our company 20, 27 years. We have a lot of, probably 30% of our employees have been here five-plus years. There's a big belief in Landmark of not what we do, but why we do it. Historical preservation is why do we do it? It's not what we do. We know what it is, it's a historical bit, but why do we do it? My mentors, the people I respect, and they loved it, they bought into it. Why they got up each morning to do it means different things, different people. For me, to have the chance to create affordable housing for seniors, this year, something we've tried or that we're doing that we've never done before, we're targeting veterans. Being a veteran myself, that's pretty personal. All this work's pretty personal to me, especially on the historical side of things. This year, we're backing away from new construction. We were forced to go after new construction last year because of the way the tax credits and the QAPs and just the way the tax credit world went. We won the last historical project in the state of North Carolina, 2014, Rex Todd. I remember chasing him around the school with a tape measure and a camera. He had all these wonderful ideas about what he was, what his vision was. And then the things he didn't know, he brought other people in to get their vision and what they thought would be a huge impact, not just for preserving the structure, but for the community itself. I've been able to fortunately work with Jeff Dalton in the past and Ted Alexander gave me a call, "John, y'all still interested in this hospital?" And the QAP changed. They give us a second-tier distances. And so I pull, immediately we pull up Haywood County and there are 9,845 people. So about 100 and some people, we were under that 10,000 that allows us to go that 1.1 miles to everything in town. So immediately called Jeff Dalton, Row House Architecture, who does an amazing job, him and Robin Raines. They're wonderful architects, they have a lot of vision, they do amazing jobs with these historical properties. They worked with us on one in Wisconsin, the only one we have in Wisconsin. And then they also, my last project under construction before I come over to the development side was Ashboro Mill Lofts. I was fortunate enough to work on that project with them. So we called them up, we met at the hospital, and it's, the fun begins. Now we're making sausages, Rex Todd would say. We start visualizing what the south parking lot could look like, how we could, where we would put our covered picnic area, how we would flow people through the building, where they would commute at or have their community center at, where they'd have their computer rooms at. So the opportunity to just be here and come up with ideas of what Haywood Hospital could be is worth every day that I do this. Landmark Development, owned by Lisa Anderson, Sarah I, she's also the president and CEO and oversees, not day-to-day operations, but oversees the entire company as a whole. She's done this in the car seat. Still loves it, took some time off to raise children, and she's back in the driver's seat of our company, heading our company in great directions, which is back to our core, our historical preservation, our historical properties. We're pulling back how much we develop, we're not chasing 10 pieces of dirt in seven different states. We're focusing home, which is North Carolina, which is our home state, Virginia and South Carolina, and we're focusing on historical properties. Last year, state of North Carolina did not award a historical preservation property. This year, we, with the county's help, the city's help, public-private relationships, we've had so much success with coming into communities and communities wanting us to be there and helping us take buildings like the Haywood Hospital and use it as a stepping stone towards what the surrounding community can turn into. Thank everybody for your time of letting us come this morning. We will, I'll get on my knees and bet we'll work night and day. We have such a passion for what we do and why we do it. And end of the day, it is the resident that counts most to us. So, and those residents will be people from your community. Thanks for letting me talk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Ted Alexander. I'm the Western Regional Director for Preservation, North Carolina, the Historic Preservation Foundation of North Carolina. Just want to briefly just say that we appreciate the opportunity to see if we can work with the county on this project. We've worked with a number of counties and municipalities all over North Carolina for these kinds of projects. They're very, a win-win situation in all cases for the municipality and for historic preservation and for those who benefit from the housing opportunities presented from these projects. So we have worked with well over 30 projects through this legislation or this general statutes that's been passed several years ago. And we've worked, probably more than half of those are for affordable housing projects like this. A couple of hospitals that we've worked with include the Burtie Hospital down in Burtie County and more recently the Gaston Highland Hospital Project. Schools, hospitals, mills, the buildings don't really mean anything so much. Well, the building's not as important as the project. And the history of those buildings is important to be able to get these tax credits for the historic preservation. So these are very important. They allow, as I said, for a win-win because it increases the tax base of the municipality, the county, as well as preserves a historic building, as well as preserves, provides housing for those who need it. So we're available to work with your county staff and you as needed, and we'll do anything we can to make this a smooth process. Ultimately, of course, the process is competitive and I think Landmark is going to do a tremendous job in putting that application together and getting those tax credits. They know what they're doing. We've worked with them on a number of projects and we're real pleased that they're going to be involved in this. So we appreciate the opportunity to work with you. Thank you. And I'll leave this information about us with your county manager here. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, David or either gentleman? Chip?
Just a more clarification. Are we talking about both historic and low-income housing tax credits, state and federal?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Board members have any questions or observations? I know we've been through this one time before.
After, yeah, I had some questions, lost my train of thought, but after the 30-year term, I mean, who collects the rents? Landmark Group?
Yes, they did.
Okay, then after 30 years, the county still owns the property, right?
No, no. There was an option where Landmark could have given the property back to the county at the end of 30 years, but we feel it's in the best interest of everybody that Landmark keeps the project after the 30 years.
Right, okay.
Then, let me, one quick thing I need to mention as well, too, that with the, there's some other legislative changes that have happened with economic development and certainly this affordable housing falls in economic development. If Landmark gets the application in to the state and everything flows through, we will have to have a public hearing on the $450,000. Recently, with the changes that has made, I think it's in our interest and very prudent that we just go ahead and have the public hearing at that time. And I would propose to call for the public hearing at the first meeting in February and then have the public hearing at the second meeting in February, if everything goes through.
That's due to the economic?
Correct, yeah.
Development incentive?
Yeah, due to that the loan is no interest and forgivable. It's truly an economic incentive at that point.
Also, if you take the amount of money we've spent since 2012 and the amount of money that we're projecting to spend for the next three years, I think it averages $119,000 a year that we've been spending to maintain a building. And that's only going to deteriorate as time goes on because as things get older, more things need to be improved. So it's just a point that I kind of noticed.
Dale has an interesting saying that, you know, a building loves people. And, you know, there's nobody in that building and, you know, it's deteriorating, you know, no matter, even, you know, with the utilities on and things happen, it's still, you know, still deteriorating slowly.
There's a need for low-end senior housing, a big need.
There's, there is, there's, there is, yeah.
And veterans' housing, I like that component.
Landmark has already done a study and it clearly shows the need and the growing need that the county will have. And you may remember from another economic study, we had the second oldest population in the state.
This is probably the best opportunity that we'll have to keep the buildings, look, you know, refurbish them, have the historical meaning still there and be able to, you know, actually make them functional buildings.
That's a great way to sum it up. That's a great way to sum it up. And, you know, after reviewing all the history and all the time that we've spent, you know, looking at this, it's just a great way to keep the building, you know, alive. And, you know, from our forefathers who fought to get this building, so I think it's a great project for us.
It's good public purpose, my question.
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
Anyone else have any questions or observations?
I just, I mean, there's a reason we moved out of that building in 2012. And the reason we purchased the old Walmart to move is the Department of Social Services. And that's probably one of the reasons that we've had few options available since 2012 and what to do with that property. So it needs to be put to better use and we need to avoid future costs and this does that. I appreciate the opportunity.
I completely agree. Chip?
Question, Mr. Chairman. So what, I think what is being sought today is more of a conceptual approval and subject to obviously drawing legal documents, which I would participate with David and attorneys for these two gentlemen to do that and bring those forward next time.
I understand the motion would just be, just to approve the option for them to purchase. And then when it comes time for contracts and all, then the conditions and all would be approved at that time of the transfer of the property.
We have no written option agreement at this time, though, is what I'm saying, sir. We have no written option agreement at this time, so I'm just talking, so I think we're talking about a conceptual approval.
Correct. So the option would, what we're asking for approval is to go forward with the option and have the chairman sign the option.
Is there an option? I haven't seen one.
There is not. But we will, that's what we want to work towards, you know, once there's approval of the option, then we'll have once there's approval of the option, then we'll have that worked up with you being here.
Okay, so there's no further questions, then it would entertain a, a motion that we approve the formation of an option to sell the former Haywood County Hospital to the Historic Preservation Foundation of, of North Carolina with the stipulations that you mentioned. We don't yet have that option, but this, this motion, if approved, would authorize Chip and his counterparts to complete that document.
And you, and for you to sign, sir.
Okay, so entertain that motion.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. Thank you all for coming, we appreciate it. And good luck. And we'll continue on with David Francis regarding the Board of Equalization and Review. David?
Chairman, Board, last year, at this time, we approved a resolution for a multi-year for the Board of Equalization and Review. It's a seven-member board. Last year, we had a tragic death to one of our members and a resignation at that time. So, need guidance from you about if you want to, for members of the board to fill in for the two vacant positions, or to advertise for two vacant positions, or the third option is that we could come back with a resolution and use the five-member board as they are now. I met with the board on Friday as they were wrapping up year-end, and it was their wish to remain a five-member board. They, it's a good board, they enjoy working with each other, so they have basically those three options there.
Okay, you've heard the options, either the board commissioner steps up and has two people.
I think, I think we had really seven good applicants, and we won, and we let them all serve, but we usually do five, and if that's what we have, I think that's what I would hope we do.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have five people still willing to serve, and they have a track record of being good board members.
Yeah, and attendance is very high.
That's, that's key.
Attendance is very high, we've, we've never...
Do you, I mean, I'm, I'm, I think, I know why we went to seven, exactly what you said, Kevin, is we had, you know, some outstanding people, and we decided to increase it, but is there necessary to have an alternate or something in case?
We'll, we'll have to have an alternate, and what we did, you know, last time was, I believe that Commissioner Upton was appointed the, the alternate due to situations that happened last year.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, if that's, that works well for the board, I would recommend.
Is Bill willing to do that again?
I'm sorry, sir.
Is Bill willing to be the alternate again?
He's not here, I can...
He's not here, so...
Not here, so I guess, it's fine.
That's why I've gotten volunteered for a lot of things I've done, is not attend the meetings, so...
Well, if Bill is unwilling, I would, I would agree to be an alternate, so you just need three people, and again, the attendance has been very, very high.
Very hot, we, we've not had, we've never had to where we had to postpone a meeting because we didn't have a quorum. They're, they're all there, and they're a very attentive board, a good listing board to both sides. Friday, when I was there, sitting in, the property owner was there, and the board asked numerous questions of the property owner and the county, and we were able to find a resolution coming out of that, from, from their questions. Very good, it was a very good, good day.
Okay, so it sounds like we're in agreement to just maintain the number at five? So, you'll bring us back the documentation we need to make that official?
Yes, sir, I will.
Okay.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, we have two final items. First is to make one appointment to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee for Long-Term Care. Ira?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Would ask for an appointment to the Nursing Home Advisory Committee. The committee has recommended, nominated by Larry Reeves, who is over that committee, Joan Barris, and would ask that you confirm the appointment for Ms. Barris to that committee. She has twenty-six years as a family therapist trainer and has been on assisted living board member for the Alzheimer's Association.
Okay, and if there's no objection, then it would entertain a motion that Joan Barris be appointed to the Nursing Home Advisory Committee?
So moved.
Second?
Take it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, and we'll finish up then with one appointment to the Engineering Review Board. Ira?
Yes, in this matter, I believe we've advertised twice and had exactly one applicant, that being Preston Gregg, one qualified applicant who was a professional engineer. He currently serves as the Town Engineer for the town of Waynesville, and has been previously employed with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. I've spoken with Mr. Pruitt, and he has no reservations about this appointment. This gentleman is qualified to serve on that board.
Questions of Ira? If not, then it would entertain a motion that Preston Gregg be appointed to the Engineering Review Board.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, that concludes our open session agenda. At this point, would entertain a motion to enter into closed session for the purpose of attorney-client privilege under authority of General Statute one forty-three, three-one-eight-point-one-one-A-three.
So moved.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are in closed session. We have returned from closed session, is there any additional business for the board? If not, it would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, we're in adjournment, thank you.